The order of the Anacortes Planning Commission, and we'll start with the roll call. Ms. Gleitman.
Commissioner Mills.
Here.
Commissioner McCombs.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Commissioner Martin.
Here.
Commissioner Stoneman.
Here.
Commissioner Juretsky. Commissioner Carrier.
I think we do have a quorum. Next order of business are the minutes, and we've been asked to, usually we approve these minutes all together, but because we have some new members, we've been asked to just approve them separately. So we'll look at the minutes for 12, 13, 20, 23. Are there any changes? If not, I don't think I have to ask for a motion. I think I can just say, all those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Abstain.
Thank you. And the next one are the minutes from 110 of 2024. Any changes to those minutes? All those in favor of 110, 2024, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstain? All ayes. And 124, 2024? Any changes to those minutes? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstain? Okay. All the minutes are taken care of, thank you very much. All right. The next order of business is public comment. You'll see in the agenda that there is a public hearing on some draft regulations for short-term rentals, and we will give you opportunity to speak to that as well. But if you are a member of the public and would like to speak on anything else, we ask that you come to the podium, state your name and your city, and we will give you three minutes. Is there anybody online? Okay, nobody with their hand up. Would you like to speak, sir? Sure? Just state your name and your city.
Ron Wertham, Government Affairs Director for the Realtor Association.
And your city.
I work out of Burlington, Washington. So that's the city, I guess.
Okay.
I'm not a resident of Anacortes. So our members have brought to my attention of the changes of your, what's your moratorium going to, total prohibitive of short-term housing. And of course, I've-
Sir, I'm just going to interrupt you for a second.
Yeah.
We're going to open a public hearing for that in the next order of business, and you are more than welcome to speak at that time.
Oh, I thought you meant that's when I can come talk.
Well, this is the public comment for anything else. And then, and then next order of business is you'll be the first up.
You got it. I'll be right there.
Well, just stay right there because it looks like, is there anybody that wants to give public comment about anything other than that public hearing? Okay, so Mr. Wertham?
Yes, ma'am.
We're going to move to item number four, public hearing. This is LEG 2023-03 Draft Regulations for Short-Term Rentals in the C, CBD, MMU, and CM zones. So we'll now open the public hearing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So-
So, point of order, generally we start with staff presentation, and then open up to public hearing after the staff has presented-
Thank you. I didn't realize there was one.
That's correct.
All right, sir, if you would just, yep, you'll be the first one up. Ms. Graich.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I am going to put my presentation up on the screen here. That's not it. What do you do with it? Okay, that's the one. Okay, so again, good evening, sorry about that. My name is Libby Graich, and I work in the Planning, Community, and Economic Development Department as the planning manager. I do thank you for the opportunity to give a brief presentation before we do open the public hearing on this, on this item. I know that we delved kind of into the details at the last meeting, but I assume that there are people here this evening and maybe online that didn't have the benefit of attending the last meeting. So I will just give a little bit of a background. This is my proposed agenda for this evening, with the staff giving some background, going over the proposed regulations. I have some answers to questions that the Planning Commission posed last time that were still outstanding, and then a summary of the public comments that we've received to date on this item. In the, we've received quite a few written public comments, which you have in your packet. And you also have in your packet a staff report that goes into quite a bit more detail than I planned to in this presentation. So hopefully, you've had a chance to take a look at that. And then finally, a public hearing and potentially deliberation and recommendation after that. So this is the timeline that shows the steps that have been taken to get to this evening and the public hearing. The City Council on March 2nd, 2023. Can everybody hear me okay? Am I close enough?
Yes.
Okay. You can't hear me? How about now? Okay. I'll get very close. So on March 2nd, 2023, the City Council adopted ordinance 4046, and that ordinance enacted a moratorium on overnight lodging use of residential dwelling units in certain zones. And those zones are the commercial zone, central business district, marine mixed use, and the commercial marine zone. So essentially, this moratorium made it so that there was a pause put on property owners being able to establish new short-term rental use of properties in those zones. So moratorium is a tool that's authorized by state law and that's available to jurisdictions to preserve the status quo while new plans and regulations are being developed in order to avoid a rush for certain types of permits when a community needs some additional time to look at its regulations and consider any needed updates. So on May 22nd, 2023, the City Council held a public hearing, as required by state law, on the moratorium, and after that public hearing, adopted ordinance 4052. And that ordinance extended the moratorium through March 27th of this year, and also adopted a work plan for developing permanent regulations addressing this issue. So from June 2023 through the end of the year, staff conducted research and had discussions with the council planning committee to gather input on what the policy goals of any draft regulations should be. And we also looked at various other jurisdictions and how they are regulating short-term rentals. On January 14th, 2024, staff released the initial draft of regulations for the public. The Planning Commission held a workshop on January 24th, 2024, where we discussed the draft. And staff has completed the procedural requirements of sending a notice of intent to adopt to the Department of Commerce, conducting environmental review, and issuing a determination of non-significance, and also publishing a notice of availability of the draft regulations and asking for a public comment from members of the community. And then finally, the notice also included tonight's advertisement for tonight's public hearing. So a little bit more background on ordnance 4046 and 4052. So the council's reasoning for adopting the moratorium, I have a little quote from the, some of the findings in the ordinance. And the council found that the use of residential dwellings for overnight lodging was the subject of community concern and contrary to the goals of promoting housing development for people who live and work in Anacortes. So that was their reasoning for adopting the moratorium. Part of it. Some of the identified concerns with overnight rentals, or excuse me, short-term rentals of residential dwelling units in these zones are the removal of existing housing from the long-term housing stock, which reduces the supply of housing available to meet existing and future residents' needs. Also, as the population grows and housing demand, as the population grows, housing demand increases. And according to research referenced in the city's Housing Action Plan, the supply of housing is closely linked to the price of housing, which can, when the, when the demand is high and the supply is low, can result in higher overall housing costs in the community. And another concern that was identified is that the 2016 Comprehensive Plan Goals and Policies emphasized making changes to the development regulations to allow for increased housing development in certain areas of the city. And then the 2019 Development Regulations implemented those policies by easing restrictions and allowing for more, more housing development in the commercial, central business districts, MMU, and commercial marine zones. And so the concern there is that new housing units that were constructed or achieved under those development regulations, people were concerned that they were being converted into short-term rentals, which was seen as contrary to those housing goals in the plan. And then finally, the, one other concern that has been identified is that allowing new multifamily units to be converted to short-term rentals may, kind of cut off, sorry about that, may adversely affect the community feel and livability of new multifamily developments, where, you know, if, if units are allowed to convert to non-owner-occupied, short-term rentals, it's possible that there might be, you know, a lot of units that might be empty at certain times of the year, and so that doesn't contribute to the livable, vibrant types of neighborhoods that we would hope to see. So that's a summary of the concerns that we heard. This is a map that shows the areas affected by the moratorium, and the, these black dashed lines are showing the areas in the city that are marine mixed use, commercial marine, the central business district, sorry, and the commercial district is here along Commercial Avenue. So currently, new overnight lodging of residential dwelling units can't be established in these areas due to the moratorium. The remaining areas of town, including, just as a point of clarification, because I think it's been a little bit confusing for folks, but the residential areas, which include the R2, the yellow, the orange, the old-town area, R3, R1. So the majority of the city that is made up of residential zones, short-term rentals are not currently allowed. So they were prohibited in 2019. And the exception to that is bed-and-breakfast establishments, which do require a conditional use permit process and have an owner occupancy requirement, and also a limit on the number of rooms that can be rented, which is six, I believe. Last time, there were questions about what the, what data we have on existing short-term rentals in Anacortes and what the kind of landscape looks like there. In, in 2021, we received some data from a company that did a little bit of that review for us and found 82 unique rental units within the Anacortes city limits. And that's citywide, not just the zones that we're focused on tonight, which are the, I've already said it multiple times, the four commercial zones. The, that data showed that there was a median nightly rate for these units of $156. And then again, this was three years ago, so it's probably different now. The 88% of the listings were made up of single-family homes. 10% were multifamily homes. And 86% were rentals of the entire home. So the owner probably wasn't there, you know, for those rentals. And then 14% partial home rentals. So the regulations that are being proposed by staff, as I mentioned, were informed by feedback from the council planning committee and very, and research conducted by staff, and other inputs. And the key goals that were identified were to prevent housing, additional housing from being taken off the long-term housing market, to preserve a sense of community within existing and future neighborhoods, and to allow for economic gain by, that all should say allow, for economic gain by owners and residents. Other considerations that staff looked at during the development of the draft was staff resource requirements to administer and enforce any new, newly adopted regulations, what the impacts would be of the proposed regulations on existing short-term rental owners, consistency of regulations with housing, new housing planning requirements under the Growth Management Act, and then also the recommendations in the 2023 Housing Action Plan. So the summary of the proposed regulations, they would add a new overnight lodging type and definition into the Anacortes Municipal Code under 1944-050, Overnight Lodging, for a short-term rental. So that would become a new category, or a new use in that overnight lodging category. The regulations would prohibit new short-term rentals in the commercial, central business district, marine mixed use, and commercial marine zones. The proposed regulations would allow existing legally-established short-term rentals in those zones with a current business license to continue operation. And these are not changes, but just clarifications. The rental of dwelling units for 30 days or more would continue to be allowed, as it is right now, throughout, throughout the city. Bed-and-breakfast would continue to be allowed, to be established within the zones, and also hotel motel. And this is just showing the section where we intend to insert the short-term rental term and definition. So it's AMC 1944-050. And these are the types of, so the definition of overnight lodging is accommodations arranged for short-term stays, less than 30 days. And those include, examples include but are not limited to bed-and-breakfast, hotel motels, and hostels. And so the, the slide is just showing, you know, what those different types of uses are and their definitions. So the proposal would add a new term, short-term rental, with a definition that says, short-term rental means, excuse me, means an overnight lodging use that is not a hotel or motel or a bed and breakfast in which a dwelling unit or portion thereof is offered or provided to a guest for a fee for fewer than 30 consecutive days. This is just showing the mechanics of what that, what these changes would look like in the code. So this is 1944-050, Overnight Lodging, inserting that short-term rentals term, adding a definition, which I just went over, and then adding some zone-specific development standards addressing that existing legally-established short-term rentals in those zones, in those zones, excuse me, could continue to operate as long as they maintain a current city business license. And then this is how the code would show that short-term rentals are prohibited in, in those certain zones, new short-term rentals. So this is table 1941-050. And what, what would happen is we would insert a new row under overnight lodging. And it would say overnight lodging is permitted in these zones, except as listed below. And we would include short-term rentals below, and the cells would be blank, which means not permitted. And then there's a reference over here that takes you to that detailed section that explains the allowance for existing STR, short-term rentals, to continue to operate. So there are a couple of future considerations that staff is recommending that the Planning Commission, the city, take a look at. There are different types of short-term rentals. In our research, we noticed that there are quite a few jurisdictions that are moving toward differentiating between owner-occupied short-term rental and a non-owner-occupied, or not owner-occupied, short-term rental. And short-term rentals where the owner does not occupy, you know, that would typically be an entire unit would be rented out. The owner doesn't live in the unit. And those are the types of short-term rentals I think we're most concerned about because those do remove long-term rental unit from the housing market. And then owner-occupied short-term rental was another type that other jurisdictions looked more favorably on in terms of, you know, they're not as impactful or impactful at all to the long-term rental housing market because the owner would live in the unit and be present when renting out rooms to guests. And so the fact that they live in the unit, it's not taking a unit off of the long-term housing market. And so staff's recommendations were that, you know, this owner-occupied, short-term rental type is pretty similar to bed-and-breakfasts in our code currently, which are, as I mentioned, permitted currently as a conditional use in most residential zones, and would also continue to be permitted in those commercial zones that we're concerned about tonight. Okay. So some of the questions that came up at the last Planning Commission meeting, I just really quickly wrote those down, and I'll just go through these pretty quick. So there was just a question about how do short-term rentals affect the community and what is the problem with them? And I've kind of covered that already. But in Anacortes, the primary concern has been with short-term rental impacts on the long-term housing availability and affordability. Has the city looked at any other method to manage the short-term rental market other than just banning it outright? For example, maybe taxing it to level the playing field? And the answer is yes. Staff did look at a number of other options for regulation, including prohibiting just certain types, caps on the number of short-term rentals per neighborhood or citywide, fees or taxes, limits on the frequency of rental, and ultimately are not recommending any of those. So there also is a bill in the legislature right now that's working its way through that we wanted to bring your attention to, and that is SB 5334. And that is still alive, I think. That would give the legislative authority of a county or the city the ability to impose an excise tax on the sale of lodging of short-term rentals that are rented through, that should say through, a short-term rental platform at a rate of up to 10%. So that is, if, you know, if passed, that would give the city the ability to add an additional tax on the short-term rentals that the money could then be used for affordable housing programs. So it's not passed yet, that's just something that's out there to be aware of. Is a short-term rental business license transferable? And I think we answered that already, but that, that is, that yes. How many units have already been established? And we estimated that there are probably 10 to 20 units in the four zones that we're concerned about. And as I mentioned before, 83 citywide. Do we have any data showing the impacts of short-term rentals on housing costs? And the answer to that is that we don't have any Anacortes-specific detailed data, but there are multiple studies that have found that an increase in short-term rentals contributed to higher asking rents for long-term rentals and a reduction in the number of available long-term rentals on the market. How many dwelling units are in the zones that we're talking about? So we took a look at that, and here are the numbers we came up with. 213. So these are just existing dwelling units, not necessarily short-term rentals. So 213 in the commercial zone, 124 in the CBD, 77 in marine mixed use, and 11 in the commercial marine zone. And then there were questions about rental, requiring a registration of rentals for existing short-term rentals. And let's see, existing legally-established short-term rentals will have a current business license for such a use, which is how we would, you know, determine whether they were established legally and track them. And so at this time, staff's not recommending establishing a registration requirement separate from that. And finally, this is a quick summary of the public comments that we've received to date. And a lot of them talked about the many benefits that short-term rentals can provide in a community, including providing temporary housing options to accommodate households that have changing life circumstances or need emergency housing in situations where maybe there was damage to a home from a fire or a flood. maybe there was damage to a home from a fire or a flood. They also can accommodate temporary workers, relocating military families, traveling nurses, and potential future residents who may be looking for a home to purchase and need a place to stay in the meantime. Short-term rentals can provide an alternative experience to hotels, so there was a lot of comment about folks' experiences using short-term rentals in other jurisdictions and liking the ability to be able to put the kids in a separate bedroom and have a kitchen, and they just liked the alternative accommodation that it could provide that a hotel couldn't. Another point was that short-term rentals benefit the community through increased tourism and taxes, and also can provide a source of income for homeowners and property investors. And then there were a few comments that mentioned that they thought that existing short-term rentals should be grandfathered in if regulations were adopted prohibiting them. And that is what is in staff's proposal right now. Okay. So that's my presentation. Are there any questions for me before we move to the public hearing?
It looks like no questions from the commission. Thank you very much. All right. Now we're going to open the public hearing. I'll get this right one of these days. And Mr., is it Wortham? You are up.
Ron Wortham, Government Affairs Director for the Realtors Association. Obviously, my members have brought this to my attention. We have a few here tonight, and very few cities in the United States outright ban short-term rentals. You know, it's, sometimes it causes a lot of issues with legality of it for property rights. We feel that since, Anacortes is a destination city, you have a lot of members, our members, that deal with people that are coming here to visit for the weekend or a week long. You have merchants that are encouraging people to come during these festivals. I don't believe your hotel motel capacity is very large. I think it's very limited. So that overflow will definitely be banned to come here, so they'd have to go to other cities, which they would be happy to take them because there's no bans in any other part of this county that I know of. In fact, only probably Seattle has some limitations. In your comp plan in 2016, you state that you should have sufficient supply of diversity of housing means to meet your community. To us, it's a slice of diversity. We understand no one wants to have a party house next door to them. I get that. Nobody does. But if you, our opinion from NAR is that you should regulate it, tax it, create a ability to, if there's a problem, that you could shut it down. We just feel that there is a severe lack of opportunity for all these merchants. If you're encouraging a thousand people to show up at these festivals you have, which are wonderful, we just like to have that opportunity. And now you're talking about banning what's left. Ninety percent of the cities are banned. Now you're taking out the rest of it. I don't know that we have a, I haven't heard in your comments that you have a problem right now. Maybe you're projecting you're going to have a problem, but it seems to be a little aggressive to our members, and a lot of them have written in. So you have questions? We have consultants in DC that said they could come here and advise you and help you regulate it, or to give you some suggestions from other cities in the United States. So any questions, or that it, just comments?
Just comments, thank you.
You got it, thank you.
Anybody else? Go ahead, state your name and your city, please.
I'm Joshua Bleeh, and I'm a broker at Windermere in Anacortes. I work here, my kids, I've raised kids here. Oh, sorry. So I want to give two perspectives here. One, coming from a personal perspective. When my wife and I came to Anacortes, we were looking for a place to stay. We had three young children. At that time, there were not short-term rentals around. Very difficult to find a place to, you know, a hotel will not accommodate appropriately that part of the population. And also, you know, there's, as was mentioned, there's families that are coming in that, you know, it's just not appropriate for a hotel to be accommodating them. But also, I wanted to, you know, there's an idea that short-term rentals are taking away from affordable housing, and, you know, it really wasn't, this finding statistics on that is difficult. You know, it's kind of an assumption out there, but the reality is, I believe that there's other benefits here with it. There's a market for short-term rentals, and there's a percentage of people that will use the short-term rentals. And then once that market is saturated, then it doesn't, it doesn't affect the rest of the housing market. So currently, I mean, you've got the, it's prohibited in the rest of the, the rest of Anacortes. So, you know, there's, the rentals that are available are available there. When you've got rentals, when they're not available, the short-term rentals are not available in the central business district or wherever, then it creates more pressure on those ones that are not in compliance right now. So you're going to find that people are going to be going to, you know, staying at these places, it's going to create a compliance issue, I believe, you know, where you're being forced to, people are going to find a place to stay, whether it's in places that you want them to be or whether it's outside of the town. I think there's other economic benefits. You know, they mentioned the generating tax revenue for the city. There's the job creation, you know, there's property managers, there's house cleaners, hospitality, maintenance workers that use that, that benefit from short-term rentals. There's the flexibility of travelers, which I mentioned. Also, another point that I found was downtown revitalization. So I felt like permitting the short-term rentals in the commercial district allows property owners to use the spaces that are there. So potentially, if some of these spaces could be used for short-term rentals, it will open up more opportunities for the current owners of the downtown spaces, maybe to realize some sort of economic benefit for being able to use them as, as that short-term rentals. Now, in the wintertime, yeah, there, it's not as good of a market for short-term rentals. But some of those would be available then for thirty days, or, you know, for a week-long or for longer rentals. I know there's a market for people that need to come in here that need a month-to-month rental, where, you know, having to go into a twelve-month rental contract is just not appropriate for them and would actually take that away from other people that need that kind of long-term housing. The other thing was, I mentioned the compliance with the existing code. And that, I feel like, once that market is saturated with, when you've got the short-term rentals here, if you have it in an appropriate space where you're able to tax it, you know, make sure that it's permitted, you're able to enforce the compliance there, then it will ease that pressure off of the residential areas where you would prefer not to have those, those short-term rentals being. So that's mine. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Come on up, state your name and your city, and please try and keep your comments to three minutes or less.
Since I'm shorter. Okay, can you guys hear me? Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, tonight, tonight?
State your name and your city.
Haraya Hajiport, Anacortes, Washington. Tonight, we stand in a critical juncture in the city of Anacortes. The issue of short-term rentals hangs in the balance, and I implore you to consider the significant benefits that it brings to our community here in Anacortes. Airbnb isn't merely a platform, it's a lifeline for many individuals seeking a safe and reliable housing in the city of Anacortes. From visiting tourists to essential workers like doctors, nurses, Boeing pilots, and active military personnel, short-term rentals cater to a diverse area of needs. By banning short-term rentals, we risk depriving these individuals of essential accommodation options. We risk stunting the growth of our local economy and denying homeowners the opportunity to general, generate supplemental income. Moreover, short-term rentals have been proven to increase the value of homes and contribute positively to the overall fabric of our neighborhoods. But beyond these immediate benefits, let us also consider the long-term implications. Short-term rentals provide builders with confidence to invest in affordable housing projects, knowing that if these affordable housing, sorry, immediate, affordable housing projects, knowing that if these properties don't sell immediately, they can be rented out on short-term basis provides a safety net, encouraging more affordable housing developments. Let us not make the mistake of punishing a vital aspect of our community that is not causing any inherent harm. Instead, let us embrace the opportunities presented by short-term rentals and work together to find solutions that benefits all residents of Anacortes. Thank you.
Thank you. State your name and your city.
Hello, my name is Jason Gould. I'm a designated managing broker with Realty Real Estate. I'm an owner of three units in Anacortes. I wanted to bring up the facts. The Supreme Court's already ruled that short-term rentals are residential use in nature, so they're not commercial use just off the bat. I did some studying on what we have in the current Anacortes market. You have 11,523 housing units. Of that, twenty-nine percent, 3,342, are rentals. Of that, you have 1,421 vacant homes. Twelve percent of the housing market in Anacortes are sitting vacant right now. They're hurting affordable housing. If you want to look at the details, you said eighty-two short-term rentals are in Anacortes city limits. That's only point zero six percent of the total housing of Anacortes in all zones. And then we're standing here today talking about twenty units and a possibility of up to four hundred units. I feel like this is almost a waste of our, our time and energy. But I bring, want to continue. The short-term rentals are not the problem. More housing is what the problem is. Allowing the builders to have confidence to be able to, to build properties, the city giving them the permits and allowing them to do short-term rentals if they're having a problem selling, or maybe that's an incentive to build, that they allow that their short-term rental housing intermittently while these people are looking for a place to live. I'm a manager of short-term rentals for over fourteen years. The people that rent these homes, they're all walks of life. They're doctors, they're workers, they're, they're coming in, they're looking for long-term solutions, and short-term rentals allow them a temporary flexibility on long-term housing. And you can't get, it's harder to use a hotel with a family or a hotel with a group, a large group. And these people need that ability to have a kitchen. They don't want to go out to dinner every single night. They want to be able to live like everyone else temporarily while they're in search of either buying, or maybe they're selling their house and they can't be at their house because there's showings every single day. So the ability to have short-term rentals is huge. Quickly, I just wanted to go over the concerns. The removal of existing housing, short-term rentals will automatically supply and demand. We managed ten units in Anacortes. The supply and demand is already capped. There isn't a bunch of demand for four hundred units to be brought into Anacortes. The supply and demand will naturally change. I am a firm believer that you should remove the existing ban on the residential zones because it will naturally, people don't want to stay in the residential zones, they want to go down to the city for short-term rentals. They want to be closer to the, to the restaurants, to the grocery stores when they're coming in from out of town. Allowing short-term rentals will enhance the ability for flexible housing, and it will naturally adjust based on demand. And right now, there's just a very tight market for housing. We just need more housing. So however you can figure out how to entice builders and developers to build more housing, that is the solution, not restricting, because when the market goes down, we're going to be stuck. We won't be able to get out of this hole. And the sense of community, short-term rentals are sense of community. Those are, we're introducing new people into our community every day. These are our, our new neighbors. They're, they might not be a new neighbor yet, but they're testing out Anacortes. They might want to come here and live here for twenty years, thirty years, until they die. We don't, we don't know. But how, short-term rentals allow a flexible housing mix. And I really suggest that you open up the residential zone as well, and not ban the commercial zone. But yeah, the, the numbers don't lie. We don't have a problem. Eleven thousand five hundred housing units, there's thirty-three hundred rentals, and there's only seventy-five Airbnbs in all of Anacortes. It's not a problem. There's no emergency. I, I'm surprised this is even a consideration right now.
Okay, thank you very much. I think there was a lady that, right there, would like to speak, state your name and your city, and please try and keep your comments to three minutes.
I'm Kathleen Lawrence Flanagan, and I live here in Anacortes. I wrote a letter on behalf of Evergreen Islands that you probably have. I think I sent it to you each individually, too. I just want to voice support for the proposed draft regulations prohibiting new short-term rentals in those four zones. And it's in line with the current housing goals of the city, and I believe it will allay community fears of rental units being taken off the long-term rental housing market and turning the city into another town that is overrun with out-of-town owners and out-of-town guests. Around a dozen letters have been submitted in opposition to the ban, over which half, more than half of them are from Realtors, which represents a very specific group of stakeholders. And to that, I will just say that when the city submitted the proposal, they also pretended, presented context about the history, about the regulatory frameworks, and the current status of short-term rentals in Anacortes. A myriad of issues, including some presented by those Realtors, were included, as well as some possible approaches for future fine-tuning. I feel like they really did their homework, and I applaud the city for that. And again, I just want to voice my support for the ban. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Going once. Is there anybody online? Ms. Gleichman?
It doesn't seem so, no.
No? No? Okay. If there are no further public comments, I believe the next step is to close the public comment portion and open this up for commissioners to discuss. Ms., Mr. Ryan?
Yeah, so I've done a lot of work looking after this, and actually, it's right down my, my line of business anyways. But, you know, me and my family, we like to go around with, with the grandparents. we like to go around with the grandparents. And we like to go to other places. It's really nice. We would not be able to see some of these places if we didn't have those short-term rentals and spend that unity with our family. It would be like, yo, let me go two hotel rooms down, and then I got to go down the stairs and go like, okay, that's where Grandma's at, cool. And it's- that's odd. The other thing is, when I first moved to Anacortes, we were able to establish that. So we weren't sure if we were going to move to a small little area. You know, thank God we did, and we had that opportunity. And our family, we're going to raise our family here, our children here. I get emotional. I love the town. And I don't want to see anything bad happen to it. But several other cities- and on the pros and the cons, bear with me. We understand, we want to preserve the neighborhoods and that quality of life. We understand that. But- Yeah, I can do that. Sorry about that. It's kind of got that voice. It's either projects really loud or it doesn't at all. Apologize. No problem. I understand. You know, and I think another thing that I would be fearful, because if I have- you know, and I'm going to try to consider both sides of this before I make any actions. In my own neighborhood, do I really want short-term rentals going on? I'm really iffy about that. Sorry about that. Really iffy about having short-term rentals in my own neighborhood around my children and stuff like that. But this is not a matter of our regular residential area. One of the other things is, there was- and this was from Evergreen Islands. Then they posed a concern over how would we be able to control that? These places just don't go to hell. How are we going to make sure that they're safe? You know? And in several other cities, they have registrations and ordinances. And they make sure that they can maintain those minimum property- maintain the minimum property codes. So we don't have that going on. We don't have the rental registration or ordinance of such for short-term rentals in our city currently. It can be done. So that just to help curb those concerns. Let me see what else we got here. Sorry, I have lots of notes. The safety standards, that's IMBC. Yeah, there was a concern on- no number was given for the licensed short-term renters. Cannon Beach, I was looking at Cannon Beach online. Just small town. They live off of short-term people coming in. That's their commerce. The nice thing about that is, those people spend money at the local shops. I know I do. But when you go online and you see the different- they have different values for their short-term rentals. 14 days, like overnight, 24 hours, or two, three days, 30 days plus. And when you look at those, when you go online to that city, they populate a list of who those owners are, which is the- who is the responsible operator. Because you would- it'd be required that you have an operator's license to operate a small business of such. With that, other words, how are we going to afford to be able to manage this? There are fees, fees associated with registering all your short-term rentals. Coming back from California on a short-term rental, we were just down there on the- on one of the houses in La Quinta, California. Beautiful. And I walked in, and this has been obviously a topic. And we opened up a binder. And the binder had the city's requirement- us as occupants, us as short-term renters. We had restrictions. No outside loud music or- and it just went on and on, our behavior. So there was actually an etiquette presented to us as tenants. And obviously, I'm going to follow that. I respect rules. I love code. Code is very square. So I do good off of rules. Those people that violate that, you are able to call that operator. And if they don't squash it within a certain amount of time, those short-term renters are removed from the premise by authorities. And if it happens more than I- I forgot what the percentage was or how many, what that number was, then the operators get fined. And that also includes, in every short-term rental, say you're the neighbor of a short-term rental. You've got some questions. You're able to walk over to the front of the house and in the front window, as they have- they have required this to be posted. And this has the contact information for both the city and the operator. So if you're like, hey, the neighbors are being crazy. They're not listening to me. You know, you can go over there, you can make those calls. But right now, we're not talking about standard neighborhoods. We're talking about commercial district. There was a worry about, okay, now we'll be taking housing away for the workers. But and for affordable housing. But now, us as regular residents, how often are we going down here to our commercial areas and spending money? And, you know, one of the concerns was, they have to close early because they don't have staff. Maybe they don't have good staff because they can't afford good staff because they're not doing enough business. If you're doing enough business and we're doing quantity, then they're going to make more money in a shorter period of time. And they will be able to employ additional employees at a higher wage. So and for the next generation, you know, I like the downtown. It is a little sleepy. It is a little sleepy. I'm home most of the time. But when I want to have date night, like, it's not here because we don't have the numbers. And like they said, they're going to close early. So just that. And then as well as a visitor. These are just things to consider, by the way. And some of my own thoughts and research. Because I mean, it's just, it's a wonderful town. Bellingham. I'll talk about Bellingham real quick. Bellingham short-term rentals.
Why don't we stop you for a moment and see if other people want to say something? And we'll let you come back to Bellingham.
Absolutely, please do.
Okay. So we're talking about not taking away existing short-term rentals. I think that needs to be clear. The short-term rentals that are here in our town, the proposal does not take any of those away. It's talking about 10 to 20 existing rentals that would stay as they are. It's talking about somebody purchasing another property, and they would know ahead of time that short-term rentals would not be allowed. That's the proposal. Mr. Stoneman?
Thank you, ma'am. And I think I want to add on to that. I mean, there've been some good comments tonight. And I do see both sides. But I lean back towards the original work done that caused the first moratorium to occur. And I think most of the considerations were taken into account with that. And I think they still apply with these next zones. So I know, at least for me, I'm still leaning towards supporting the moratorium.
Okay. Mr. Mills?
I have a question for staff. It was before my time. But what was the thought process of the logic back in 2018 or 19 when the prohibition went in for the residential zones? Why were these four zones left out of that change?
You're making me go way back.
Maybe I clarify. What I'm looking for is to understand the logic for that separation that we're now being proposed to be put back to be on the same plane.
You know, I- I don't remember if there was specific discussion about that. Or, you know, the 2019 development regulation updates was a pretty large endeavor. And so it's possible that it just wasn't an issue that, in these zones, came up for consideration at that point. And so I don't know the specifics. Just not recalling. So I'm sorry, I can't. I don't have a better answer for you.
I'm sorry, the public comment part is over at this point. And it's just for the commissions, okay? Okay, Mr. McComb?
Hi. I agree, very interesting discussion tonight. I think good points brought up by everybody. There's definitely a need for affordable housing. But I think there's definitely benefits from short-term rentals as well. I have a hard time with- I guess I understand that there's- there's housing that's been developed for the purpose of people that don't have the same advantages to be able to live here in Anacortes. And I definitely understand we want to be able to provide that type of housing. And so- but I also don't know that the- if you look at the numbers, we're talking about 20 max in all of Anacortes right now. Or, you know, I don't know that that's less than- less than 3/10 of a percent or about 4/10 of a percent of total housing in Anacortes. So I have a hard time believing that that is really going to make a huge impact in affordable housing. But it also, I think there is benefit economically and otherwise to the city by having some short-term rental options. I think the- I like the idea of, instead of maybe completely restricting additional or new short-term rentals, maybe the city should look at a different type of, you know, a different type of control, maybe a cap in short-term rentals. Or maybe a- also an additional, instead of, I think the resident occupied short-term rentals is a good option that still allows for people to own those and live in them or long-term rental. But then gives them some flexibility for short-term rentals when it's advantageous to do so. So I think that would be- I think the kind of the way I'm leaning would be to recommend that the city don't just completely ban new short-term rentals in these zones. But maybe look at a cap and then also not- do not limit resident occupied short-term rentals. Over.
Okay, Mr. Ryan, you want to tell us about Bellingham?
Yeah, okay. So anyways, and thanks for remembering the point. I just was just caught up in everybody else. So Bellingham, they're downtown, they're a little commercial area. They have a lot of restrictions on their regular zonings for their regular housing zones. Quite good restrictions. But they have no- they've actually gone completely the other way. And this is Bellingham, I'm surprised. But they have no cap in the commercial areas. And but, you know, and then you look at their downtown, around where all those commercial areas are, they're kind of popping. And they are making good money, and they do have a lot of people visiting. I mean, you know, and I'm just putting this out there because I don't know if everybody else has looked at from the good, looked at from the bad. We are able to set with some of these rentals, there's other cities that have said, okay, you have to be a resident of the city to own a short-term rental. Others, that they don't really care about it. So but cities, it looks like to me that cities are able to set such restrictions so we can go, hold on, not all this much. Because we obviously, this is about keeping money in our economy. And this is keeping it in our town. You know, and I'm sure there's a way that we could figure out how we can make both sides of the parties happy, you know, by having those regulations, having, you know, set some of the set restrictions anyways. And also, you know, kind of enforcing that, the etiquette that I was experiencing down there in Palm Desert and Palm Springs area. Thank you.
I have a question for Ms. Graje. I believe that the genesis of this moratorium was, I think you said something was built as affordable housing and it got converted into short-term rental? Is that right?
So one of the reasons that the community concern came up a few years ago, I guess it was, a year ago, was because, yes, so the development regulations allowed for more flexibility in the commercial zone CBD to build townhouse-type developments, single-purpose developments to increase the housing supply in Anacortes. And there were quite a few townhomes and multifamily projects built in 2021 timeframe, 2022. And some of them were converted to short-term rental. They were not necessarily affordable, you know, defined as affordable housing. They were townhouse market rate.
Okay. I'm trying to think. Generally speaking, I agree with the gentleman that said, let the market dictate what's going to go on. Generally speaking, I agree with that. On the other hand, we really do need more houses here. And it makes, even if there might not be a whole lot of data, which, you know, I wish there was, but it makes logical sense to me that if a unit is being used as a short-term rental, that it's off the market for somebody wanting to actually live here. And on the one hand, we do want to encourage tourism. That brings in dollars, that helps businesses. We want to encourage that, which is what short-term rentals would do. On the other hand, I think a higher need is to accommodate the people who actually live and work here. And if we were going to ban everything and close down short-term rentals, I'd be 100% against that. But since we're allowing, really, the current market has prevailed. We are saying that those that are here now can stay. And since we're allowing that to stay, it makes sense to me to do what would be best for the actual residents. And that would be to be providing more opportunities for long-term rental or midterm rentals versus allowing for the visitors. So I guess that's how I would be leaning. Other comments?
You know, looking for-
Mr. Ryan?
Oh, thank you. I apologize, Madam Chair. You know, I just blurt stuff out. Lord. So this is, you know, so we're either going to keep the moratorium or we're going to lift the moratorium. Is that how this looks?
We're either going to vote to change the regulations to be in line with the moratorium or change them some other way or don't change them at all. Those are our options, am I right?
Yes.
And we're merely recommending-
And we're only recommending, correct.
To the city what they do, right?
Yep, we're just the recommenders.
And, you know, it is the commercial marine areas. So as far as when it- in my opinion, when it comes to that affordable housing, the numbers, the footprint, it's- the footprints are too large. But, you know, and I know that we have the ADUs coming down, down the chain. And then we're going to be allowing or potentially 2 ADUs per property. And that's in the regular residential area. I would assume those are not short-term rentals. Some cities do not allow those to be short-term rentals. With a smaller footprint, they become affordable. So I mean, are we- would we be able to fulfill that with what's coming down the pipeline and allowing? So we're getting both. We're going to get affordable housing. Yes, it'll be smaller- smaller foot- be smaller, smaller, smaller footprint homes, because everything has a price per square foot, even as a rental, you can't get somebody a 2,000 square foot house and be like, yeah, that's 800, you know, you guys are cool. I understand that, that an owner can't afford that, especially with taxes in Anacortes. So, you know, just want also as well, you know, take and look forward to go, hey, what else, what, what is, what is possibly coming down, so, because I really want to have short-term rentals, or I mean, not, sorry, long-term solutions for affordable housing. You know, there's a young family in town and my wife, my wife's got a soft heart and she's helped sponsor it because the little girl's a friend of my son, they don't have affordable housing, and it's, it, it, it's kind of trying, and it's, it's kind of sad, actually, but a regular home is not affordable, a full 1,200 square foot or larger is not affordable. So we're looking at, like, what are, what are the alternatives, what, what, would we be able to take the options of the ADU and supply that more affordable housing with a smaller, smaller footprint, I, and that's just a question. So, I mean, and then, and then we, we want the commerce, so, but I don't, you know, meanwhile, I don't want it out of control in my own neighborhood, so, you know, is there a way that we'll be able to solution for all of these? So anyways, thank you guys for your time.
It sounds like you're kind of six of one, half a dozen of another.
Data, I just want more data, and then as well, you know, I don't want to squash one because, you know, I mean, I'm, I'm a young 50-year-old and I still like to see activity happening in, in our town, and that, and, and to keep it from getting too sleepy, but I don't want it to turn into like Rock and Rollville either, you know, so, because I'm not down with that either.
Okay. Mr. Mills?
Madam Chairman, just to share my thought process as much as anything. My way of thinking, we don't have a problem right now, what we're trying to do is make sure that we don't, longer term, have a problem with the volume of short-term rentals, get into a Santa Barbara or a mid-California problem. But in the meantime, my concern is the conversion of, of existing properties from either long-term or owner-occupied to short-term. Doing that does not create more housing units, it creates fewer housing units. And supply and demand, that's going to raise the cost of living for the other units. So I don't, it, I think it comes down to a question of what our, what our priorities and what our criteria are. Staff has put together a, a package taking us back through the thought processes and the priority of providing a variety of housing that supports a, a wide range of affordability. And that leads me to be concerned about taking units out of the marketplace. Another thought, several people have mentioned it, I think it was in some of our public comments, about allowing short-term rentals but somehow capping it, and I'm concerned that that would lead us to both a administrative burden on the staff, an enforcement dilemma. But if we came to the, to wanting to recommend to the city that we continue to allow short-term rentals even beyond those that are grandfathered, then I think we need to look at a cap.
Mr. Stoneman?
Sorry, just real quick, because you guys both used the cap word, and that's good, I just want to point out, I think that's what we're doing. I, I mean, I think you're actually agreeing with the moratorium, but the way we're doing this with keeping the current short-term rentals, that's all we're doing is capping, we're not getting rid of them, so.
Mr. Mc, Mr. McCollum?
Well, yeah, I think, I think of a cap as differently than what we have right now, right? Because it's, if and when someone at the short-term rental closes down business, there's not a new short-term rental replacing that, right? So right now, you have roughly three and a half percent of, of the available residences in these zones, I'm off the numbers, we, you know, if we go with the 20, number of 20 short-term rentals and approximately 420 units, that's about a four, four percent, I think, or 3.8. So, I'm a numbers guy, so I'm, I'm looking at it as, well, those are going to shut down and eventually they're going to go away, most likely. So that's not really a cap, this is, this is a, we are shutting down short-term rentals in Anacortes if, if the city goes through with this, right? So is that really where we want to be? I don't think it is, I think there's, I think there's economic viability for having some short, some short-term rentals, so you could look at, hey, if we, right now in these zones, we have roughly three or four percent, maybe we put in a four percent cap so that we maintain the existing, if those close or there's more units, now we have opportunity for, for others to do, to run a short-term rental. And then if you're worried about losing housing, but you use, to me, a residential or resident occupied short-term rental is a great, you know, it's a win-win because you, you're not taking away housing from a resident, but at the same time, like, they rent out their house for a week or their apartment for a week, they probably paid their mortgage for a month, right? Like, that's a huge opportunity for them, so, but right now, you wouldn't be able to do that without, without a short, without allowing short-term rentals, or am I off-base there, Libby?
So the proposal would not eliminate the ability to establish a new bed and breakfast in these zones, and the bed and breakfast requires the owner occupancy, it has to be a, a single-family residence, and it limits the number of rooms that can be rented and also has some parking requirements, so that would still be an option under the current proposal in, in these zones.
That's a, kind of a different setup than a, than just a short-term rental, like, what you were showing on, I think it was on slide four, you were showing resident occupied, or owner, well, you said owner or long-term tenant lives as principal residence, right? So that's what I'm seeing, is that is, you're not taking away housing from folks that live here, right? But you're also offering them, you're offering the city opportunity, when, when the waterfront festival's here, you know, people could stay here, but, and you're also offering that resident an opportunity to, to make supplemental income. I think that's a pretty good situation for the city and for, and for people who live here.
So I have a question for you then, because I think that we might be able to, to do both, we might be able to make a motion to recommend closing these four areas right now with a second recommendation for the future, because I think it would be more, the recommendation would be more than just these four little areas, it would be for the whole city, wouldn't it?
Certainly could be.
Yeah.
But if we're, I, I guess I'm looking at what we're, the discussion we're having right now, just about these zones, which is not a huge portion of the city.
Yeah.
With the commercial, the commercial area being the area that we would lift moratorium from.
Mr. Ryan, can you stay up at the mic, please?
Oh, I apologize. You know, my, you know, as, it's almost like a trial of lift, if, if we don't have the moratorium in the commercial area, it hasn't flowed into our residential areas yet, would, from there, would we be able to go, hey, are we making mistakes, if we not, do we need to up, up these rules, do we need to change, how are we, do we need to add additional requirements or regulations before it trickles into the single-family living areas? I mean, just, just something to consider.
Mr. Mills?
Just thinking about the comments that you were making about, and you kind of codified of having a second part of our recommendation be changes to future considerations. Going down the road of owner-occupied or residency requirements would help address a potential risk of investors coming in and buying up properties to convert to short-term rentals.
I don't want that.
So the, the, the structure of what that future consideration would be pretty critical, I appreciate that opportunity, but we, that would almost take almost more consideration than what we're looking at tonight, but worth consideration.
Okay. We, we need to make some kind of a recommendation, is there somebody that's ready to jump in with a motion? No, maybe.
I'll, I'll move that we accept or recommend the moratorium to the four zones as, as written.
Okay, is there a second?
No, I would like to recommend that we lift the moratorium.
Okay, so we've got a motion on the floor, we need a second in order to have a discussion.
Or not.
So the motion is to accept the recommendations of staff to have a moratorium on those four areas with grandfathering in the current existing short-term rentals.
To codify the moratorium.
Correct.
Well, yeah, point of order, moratorium is a specific thing that is a temporary ban or a temporary stay, so any motion should not include the word moratorium because the intent of this action is to create permanent rules.
Thank you for that. Stoneman?
I, I move what he just said.
Okay. Is there a second? I will second. Now, we can still have discussion. Mr. Mills?
Yeah, I'd like to make sure I understood the motion. Is the motion on the floor to adopt the changes as presented in our packet?
Yes.
Recommend the city adopts.
Adoptes that, not moratorium, adopts the proposal change to the regulation. And I think your second still holds.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other thoughts? Okay. All those in favor of adopting the changes to the, maybe I should actually read this, the draft regulations for short-term rentals in the C, CBD, MMU, and CM zones? All those in favor, well, maybe we better do it, a roll call, yeah?
Commissioner Mills?
Aye.
Commissioner McCollum?
Nay.
Commissioner Ryan?
No.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Commissioner Stoneman?
Yes.
Three to four, uh, three to two, sorry.
Motion passes. Now, would we like to provide the recommendation to the city council for anything in the future, such as what we've just talked about? No? Mr. Ryan?
Yeah, yeah, just since we're on the, on the topic of short-term rentals, you know, you know, I want to, you know, recommend that we, we look into, I mean, there's, one of the issues I'm having is that we don't have enough data, I need, I would love to have more data, but we, we just don't, and I'm, and I can't figure out how to get it.
How about if we let you stew on that for a bit?
Yeah, thank you.
And if there's no further discussion on four A, I'm going to move to five on our agenda.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. McCollum.
I would move that we, in addition to the proposed changes about short-term rentals, I would, I would move that we recommend to the city to establish regulations or ordinance provided for, for resident occupied short-term rentals in all zones.
Okay, so there's been a motion now for a second recommendation to the city, that the, the city explore? Is that the right word?
Actually, I would, I'd probably move beyond explore and implement change.
Okay.
To allow for owner or resident occupied short-term rentals with no-
To allow resident occupied short-term rentals?
Yes.
In all areas of the city?
In all zones.
In all zones. Is there a second?
I would second.
Mr. Mills has seconded, any more discussion?
I just, I don't, I think that's not a bad idea, I would just like to say that I think that's something that we give back to staff first and let them come back before we actually vote to implement or specifically recommend. Is that, is that fair?
Well, the way I understand the recommendation, it would be to recommend a city council, that the city establish these addition, the regulations for resident occupied short-term rentals, so that would be a separate amendment process, that would go through the full public process, including come, draft regulations coming back to planning commission and city council adoption, so it would be a separate process. Did I understand the question correctly? Okay.
Sorry, but then I guess, Libby, do we, do we need to vote on that, or is that something that we just kind of give to you as, hey, this is what we think needs to be a next step?
Um, I think it's up to the commission, I, you could certainly, you know, if you want that to be part of your recorded motion, you know, it's a formal way to pass that information on to the council, so it's up to you.
Mr. Coleman, do you have a recommendation?
We do have a motion and a second on the floor, so.
I'm not asking for a recommendation about Robert's rules, I'm asking for a recommendation regarding this proposal.
I think, as Libby said, if the planning commission makes a formal motion, you know, suggesting something for the city council to look at further, then they'll have some, they'll have an official motion for you to actually consider, so it's not a bad idea, probably not required, but I think it, it is a nice thing to do, to make it very clear for the council.
Okay, any other discussion? We do have a motion and a second on the floor.
Well, just, I don't think the motion was to look at it further, I think, I, I thought the motion was to actually just make it happen, so that's why I want, I'm okay with looking at it further.
My motion is to recommend that the city council, yeah, implements it.
See, yeah, implements it, you're not, you're not saying look at it further, you're saying implement it.
I think, that's, I'd rather have action.
Okay, looking for action, any more discussion? Okay, let me see if I can restate the motion and then we'll take a vote. The motion by Mr. McCollum, second by Mr. Mills, to implement, or for the city council to consider implementing, not consider, they have, okay, to, for the city council to implement a, in all zones, a short-term rental allowance for owner-occupied short-term rentals.
Residents, residence occupied, I believe is the.
Short, okay, did you get it? Did you get that? Okay, close enough. Ms. Gleichman, would you call the vote, please?
Commissioner Mills?
Aye.
Commissioner McCollum?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Commissioner Stoneman?
No.
Okay, motion passes. We're moving on to five A, other business, 2045 population and housing projections. And thank you, by the way, gentlemen, for your good comments, and thank you, audience, for your participation as well. for your participation as well.
Good evening, planning commissioners, members of the public. My name is John Coleman. I'm the Director of Planning Community and Economic Development. And tonight, I wanted to talk to you about our upcoming population and, upcoming comprehensive plan and how population and housing projections and, and employment projections play into that process. So last month, I gave a rather lengthy presentation to the planning commission describing how the comprehensive plan update process works, what the comprehensive plan is, and how the comprehensive plan then guides our future development regulations and how the city actually grows. So our comp plan is a list of guiding policies, and it also takes a snapshot in time of what we have as far as infrastructure and, you know, everything from housing to, to sewers, to roads, what we have. And then it looks at our next 20-year projection of growth, and then gives some policy guidance to how we're going to accommodate that next 20 years of growth. So what does that actually mean? So the Washington State Growth Management Act requires that, that's the GMA, requires a periodic update from, for the 2025 to 2045 period. So what we do, what, regionally, we work on our population projections for Skagit County. And then from that, we filter it down to our population projections for each of the cities, and then we filter that down further to, you know, based on that population projection, how much new housing we're going to need to accommodate over 24, over the next 20 years. We also have data about how our, how many new jobs we're going to have over the next 20 years, and then we will then have to determine how are we going to accommodate those kinds of jobs? And all of this comes down to our land use policies and our urban growth area. So depending on the amount of growth that we have and how we choose to accommodate that growth, we may or may not need to expand our urban growth area boundaries. For those unfamiliar with urban growth area, in Washington State, we have, cities have their city limits, and that, that's what we've annexed in the past. The urban growth area includes everything within the city limits, but it's also area outside of the city limits that is not under city jurisdiction, but it's an area into which we plan to grow. And so we go through a long public process to determine if we're going to expand our urban growth area and where. So working with the property owners outside of the city limits, like who wants to come into the city, what areas are going to be feasible for us to expand our urban growth areas into? So, you know, can we serve it with roads? Can we serve it with sewer water, et cetera? I'm not saying right now that we're going to expand our urban growth area, but we are looking at, you know, 20 years' worth of growth. So we're going to study this possibility. Or the other option is we can just increase density and, and change, make other land use policy changes in our comp plan and development regulations to accommodate the growth without expanding our urban growth area. So getting back to what an urban growth area is, so that's in, we'll, we'll draw a line outside the city limits that is based on facts about how much land we're going to need to accommodate our future growth. So we can't just willy-nilly go and make it giant. A lot of that was done in the 90s when UGAs were first allowed, and nobody really knew how to do it properly. And so in, you know, over the past 35 years, we've kind of figured it out a little better. And now we, we right-size our urban growth areas to make sure it's not too big and not too small. So that's one of the things that we're going to be doing over, studying over the next few years. So as I mentioned, we have population projections, unemployment, we have population projections, employment projections, and we'll be reviewing that as a part of our comprehensive plan update cycle. Here's a picture of our comprehensive plan that was last done in 2016 and has a planning horizon from 2016 to 2036. Now we're doing 2025 to 2045. New this year, in, well, in the 2025 element, where you have to address, we have to include a climate and resiliency element, which will address a resiliency to climate change. So how are we going to address the impacts of additional heat? You know, hotter summers, more fires, dryer, more drought in the summers, more rain in the winters, rising sea level, all of the identified impacts of climate change. And then we'll also be doing a greenhouse gas emissions sub-element. And that is inventorying our greenhouse gas emissions and how we're going to try to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions in the future. I'm not going to get a whole lot into the climate element tonight because we're going to, when we officially launch the process of our update cycle, I'm going to go into that in great detail. And we're, we're having consultants that are experts in climate that are going to be guiding that process. And there's going to be a lot of public input on this. We recognize that, you know, this is a new element that's required by the state, and not everybody sees eye to eye on climate change. So it's going to have a healthy debate. I'm just here today to mention this is one of the things we're going to be reviewing as a, as we will be reviewing our urban growth area boundaries if necessary and our critical areas ordinance. So tonight is when I really wanted to talk about our population projections. So that guides everything. So we start from our county population projections, which was provided to us by the Washington State Office of Financial Management. The, the Office of Financial Management provided the county a range of high, medium, and low potential growth out to 2045. And then through a regional process, through Skagit Council of Governments, with recommendations from the, the technical advisory group, which is basically the planners from all of the jurisdictions in the county, we came up with a recommendation, and the Skagit Council of Governments approved a, the median projection growth for the county. That is, that was the easy part. The OFM median projection has been pretty spot-on for the past three cycles. So it was, it was fairly easy for us to look at those numbers and say, yes, we think that they're doing it right again this year. And so we, well, we took that median growth projection and went to the next step, which is filtering it down to how much of that population is going to go to each of the cities. So the Skagit Council of Governments, acting as our regional planning assistants, their staff hired a community attributes, which is a consulting firm that specializes in land use and demographics. And they looked at, they created a giant table, multiple tables, actually, that identified potential growth patterns in the, in the, in the county and in each of the jurisdictions. And so we reviewed all of those potential, those potential scenarios and made a recommendation on the one that seemed like the most likely scenario, which is based on past performance of population trends in the county. So basically, we looked at, how did each of the cities grow over the past 20 years, 30 years, 40 years? And, you know, continued that trend line in all of the jurisdictions? And that's how the model came up with the, the population projections for, for each of the cities. They also, in this, in this particular model, they identified that the population changes have altered a little bit in the past 10 years. So we put a little extra weight on the 10 years. Within the past 10 years, we didn't just take the, kind of the straight line for the past 40 or 50 years. It's adjusted at that tail end. And again, those, after studying all of those, and I'm really boiling this down to very simple, short description, after going over this ad nauseam and painfully reviewing for months, we, the planners made a recommendation to the Skagit Council of Governments, which is a reminder is, the technical, the, the steering committee is all of the mayors for the jurisdictions and the commissioners for the county. And they have a, they have a body that reviews, as a body, they review these recommendations and discuss it and ask questions to the consultants and to the SCOG staff and to the planners. And through that process, we came up with our population projections for each of the city. So currently, as you can see up here, is our, their 22 population was 17,983. That number is actually including the population in our urban growth area as well, which is only a couple hundred people. But if you were to go to the, the 22 population estimate in the Office of Financial Management, April 1st allocations, you'll see that number's slightly different. It's 17,882. So there's basically 101 people living in our urban growth area. So that is why this number looks different than our official city population, because it has some residents outside of city limits that are in the area that is anticipated to become part of the city someday eventually. Similarly, our 2045 projected population is envisioning what would be in our urban growth area as well. But the fact of the matter is, we're anticipating our population for the city to be 22,971 in 2045. So that's roughly 217 people per year, 216.8, point eight, and some additional numbers beyond that. I only went to a decimal point of one to keep this simple. And if you just look at the change, you know, 4,988 new residences, and you divide residents, not residences, residents, so that's people, and divide that by our current population estimate for 2022, and that's 27% more people residing in the city than currently do. And I'm going to, oh, and I just go right to it. So the question I got a council, wow, 27% growth, that's really big. Now, that's not a 27% you know, change every year. That's over, the math gets a little bit hard to conceptualize, at least for a planner. Maybe, maybe other people in the room understand the numbers a little more clear. It's statistics, right? So it's challenging for some people to accept in their brains. So what I was able, what I did is I looked at 10-year increments since we, since OFM started providing us our 10-year estimates. In 1970, our population was 7,700, and 1980, in the next 10 years, up to 1980, it grew by 1,312. That's a 17% change over that 10 years. You can see, it was a 27% change between 1980 and 1990. So the night, the 80s grew quite a bit. That was a lot of growth. 27% over 10 years is really fast. Now, we probably, you know, we've all been around here for the past 20 years, so we remember what it was like between 2010 and 2020. The change from 2010 to 2020 was only 1,859 or 12%. And that kind of feels like we've grown a lot, hasn't it, in the past 10 years? But that's actually much slower than those years between 1980 and 2000. But I wanted to provide that as kind of background to help understand. It sounds like a lot, but it, it's actually less than our growth over the previous years. What I did then is I broke it down, our projections. So what you're looking at here is, is if we just make an assumption that we grow by 216.8 persons per year, over 10 years, that'd be 2,168. The change would be 12% in between 2022 and 2032, and then yet another 2,168 for the next 10 years, between 2032 and 2042. And now it's only 10.7%. Why is it not 12%? Because you're starting with a larger number and you're dividing it by the same number. So that's where the statistics get a little sticky and, and hard to understand. That's why I put it out like this. And then just to round it out, those last three years between 2042 and 2045 would be another 652 persons for that three-year period. And you look at that, it's only 3% growth. So I did my best to kind of explain, but that all adds up to a 27% increase over 23 years. I'm going to go back to this slide here, because also in here, I talk about our employment estimates. Our current employment estimate is that there's about 9,503 people as of 2022 working in the city and our urban growth area. And then our projected employment would be, is 12,648. So that's an additional 345, 3,145 jobs, 33% growth. Jobs are not, you know, land use with jobs is, is not created equal if, so as we're trying to provide land to accommodate our jobs, we're also going to be looking at the types of jobs that we anticipate to grow. So we know we're a maritime city, so a lot of these are going to be maritime jobs. Others are going to be industrial jobs, and others are going to be retail or office jobs. Now, the numbers for industrial type is, it takes more land per person, because when you're doing industrial work, you usually have large lay-down yards, construction equipment or heavy equipment laying around and materials and warehouses. So the number of people per square foot is much less than, say, an office where you've got three stories of people in 200 square foot cubicles. So you can pack a lot of people on a smaller amount of land, depending on the type of land, depending on the type of jobs that we're creating. So we're going to be looking at that in depth to try to figure out how to accommodate the types of jobs that we're anticipating to, to grow over the next 20 years. There's going to be a lot of questions about this, don't worry. This is a kickoff. I'm just here to tell you what these basic numbers are, so you can wrap your head around the scale of the project that we're going to be embarking on over the next several months. Getting back to population. I already said what our population projections growth is going to be. Well, we get to do something very different from what we've done in the past. In the past, we've always just said, okay, we just need to make sure that we've got enough land to accommodate the types of, or to land to accommodate the people that are coming into town. And we could just say, oh, you know, that's going to be all single-family houses out in the R1 and 2 zones on, you know, so we're anticipating it all to be single-family duplex growth. We don't really have that luxury anymore. Now, the reality is that we need a mix of housing, and the city of Anacortes has been doing a really good job of trying to create zoning policies to allow for different types of housing. And this series of charts really illustrates the change that was brought about because of the policy changes that the city has made. You can see back in 2019, that large blue 72% section was single-family. What we're, what we were seeing back then was, you know, our zoning policies really encouraged single-family type housing. After the 2016 comprehensive plan update, that was something that the city wanted to address and wanted to allow for more different. address and wanted to allow for more different types of housing. So over the next few years, the city worked on changing our development regulations to be in line with that new comprehensive, those new comprehensive plan goals from 2016, to allow for a mix of housing. And in 2019, the city passed fairly sweeping changes to allow for cottage development, make it easier for duplexes to be constructed, make it easier for ADUs to be constructed, and creating allowances for townhome units to be built. So pretty quickly, you can see in 2020, the year after, so on the bottom left, after those changes went into place, oh, my gosh. So why is that green missing? Forty-five is, so the green is multifamily. You can see a pretty drastic change right away in how housing was being developed. We still didn't see any cottage development, and we didn't see any townhome development yet, but, you know, we saw some multifamily development in 2020. In 2021, the thirty percent there is the townhomes. That is when townhomes really caught on, and cottage development, which is that orange slice in the middle at ten percent, started to catch on. Again, the green is multifamily. And you see that single-family slice, in two years, dropped from seventy-two percent to thirty-three percent. So the zoning policies that were put in place were working, and the development community was eager to provide different housing. So it's really illustrative of our policies in the past may not have been in line with what the market wanted to provide. So by changing the rules, the fact that developers immediately took hold and started doing, providing different types of housing shows that there was a market need. We continue to see that trend in 2022. The large twenty-eight percent multifamily section has increased. That's largely because the island, the former island inn was, submitted permits were approved to convert from a hotel to multifamily. So now those units are residential units instead of hotel units. And it's also illustrative of how one multifamily project can have a significant impact, because there's so many more units in a multifamily. If you say you have a twenty-unit apartment building, you need to, like, you need to build twenty single-family homes, which that's a fair amount, and it takes up a lot more land. So 2022 is a really good illustration of how, of our zoning policies in place. 2023 is a little bit challenging, because, because of market impacts and particularly interest rates, we did not see as many building permits. So the, the numbers in 2023 were down so much that the data's really not all that clean, because there's just so few number of permits that were issued that year. This is just kind of breaking down those, these past two years a little bit further. And this is what I was saying about the housing units. So this is a, this chart shows 2022 in blue and 2023 in orange. You can see there was only twelve, twenty-four, thirty-two, thirty-six units permitted in 2023. So those numbers are so far down compared to previous years that it's challenging to really get a whole lot of information out of the data in 2023. But we do still have a pretty good mix in 2023, so that's, that's something. And hopefully, with interest rates supposed to hopefully be coming down here in the near future, we'll see, again, more housing units being developed in the city. So now that I've talked about the importance of different types of housing in the city, I'm gonna talk about what we need to do in our twenty-year housing, in our twenty-year comprehensive plan. So instead of just saying we're going to accommodate housing any old way, now we're required to accommodate housing based on income bands. So what are, what is the income band? So I'll go back to what I was showing here. This is from, from the Housing and Urban Development, the federal agency known as HUD. This is the area median income for the Mount Vernon-Anacortes area. The way you can see in the large box on the left there is, the median family income is ninety-six thousand two hundred. And so that's for a family that, in, in one residence. And this is largely used to, to determine how much rents should be in, how much rents are, how much rents should be in affordable housing. And we use this in, well, when I say we, I say the Department, Washington State Department of Commerce uses this AMI information to then determine what, what the area median, area median income is for the area, and then they break it down by the zero to thirty percent earners of, you know, so families that make zero to thirty percent of that area median income, and then the next bracket is thirty-one to fifty percent, and then fifty-one to eighty percent of the area median income, and then eighty-one up to the area median income, and then there's two more twenty percent bands above the AMI. And the State Department of Commerce built a tool called HAPT, Housing and Planning, something, I forget what it is off the top of my head, I apologize, into which we plug our population projections. And out of that model is churned out the data that you see here. So it determined that, based on the population projection of two thousand nine hundred and forty-two needed, necessary units to accommodate our twenty-year growth, it says how many in each income band we need to provide. So now we need to take, we need to make land use policies to accommodate each, the types of housing that can serve each of these income bands. So when we're talking about zero to thirty percent AMI, or even thirty-one to fifty percent AMI, that's supported housing. So that's your, that's our Anacortes Housing Authority. That's maybe churches that are providing a few rooms for, for people that, at a low cost. It's the Anacortes Family Center and other agencies that are helping people that are in these low-earning brackets to support them, their ability to live in a home. These areas, these lower ones are probably not going to be a homeownership, but these are rental. Once you get to the fifty to eighty percent, again, that's probably multifamily, and our, the Department of Commerce has guidance that talks about what type of housing will accommodate each of these income bands. But that's probably gonna be a little bit of supported housing. I know that local housing authorities support, will give support to people that up to sixty percent AMI. So if you demonstrate to the local housing authority that you only make fifty-nine percent of the AMI, you're eligible for housing through that housing agency. And they've got sliding scales depending on where you are in that band, you know, they give less support to somebody that's up in the fifty to sixty range, whereas someone who's at the zero to ten percent, they might be basically paying for it. And those housing authorities can explain to you much more about what AMI, those figures from HUD is. I just wanna be able to give you the basics here, I don't wanna get too far down in the weeds. Excuse me. So eighty-one to a hundred percent AMI is gonna probably be multifamily housing, townhouses, duplexes, middle housing type units. There might be some opportunity for homeownership in that area. Hundred and one to a hundred and twenty, you're starting to get into, you know, townhomes and duplex units. But the Commerce Guidance says that single-family homes do not count in that one hundred to a hundred and twenty percent, because this is for new units only. This is not addressing, you know, our existing units. This is all new units that are going to be needed to be provided over the next twenty years to accommodate everybody that lives and wants to live in Anacortes. So basically, if you look at what it costs to build a new single-family home, and you kind of reverse engineer it, say it costs, you know, four hundred thousand dollars, buy some miracle, it's gonna be more than that, it's probably gonna be more like five hundred thousand dollars to build a single-family home on the cheap even in the Anacortes area. You reverse engineer that, say, okay, what would your mortgage be to, to pay that off at a, currently, well, even use a low six percent interest rate, and you're gonna have to earn a lot more than ninety-six thousand two hundred dollars a year to pay that mortgage. So that's why Commerce is saying that only single families are gonna count towards a hundred and twenty AMI. And, you know, fancy, fancier condos and townhomes are also gonna be in that range too. Are you scared yet? Those numbers are really jaw-dropping. The, the zero to thirty, nine hundred and twenty-four units in the zero to thirty. So currently, I think the Housing Authority has two, well, between the Housing Authority and Anacortes Family Center, we have two hundred and seventy-seven units in that range.
When you see, when you see the number nine twenty-four, that's, that's the number of residents that you need to accommodate, or is that the number of units?
That's the number of units.
So that would have multiple residents in it, right?
Yeah, right. And I apologize, I can't really explain how the HAPT tool spits this all out. It's based on existing need, I believe, and, and future projected need, and just the reality of where people in the area are on that area median income scale. Now, it's not the city's responsibility to provide the land, it's not the city's responsibility to provide the money to build supported housing, it's not our responsibility for any of that. It is, but it is our responsibility to make sure that our zoning policies make it possible for private developers and, you know, other housing authorities and family centers and those sorts of organizations that provide these housing. We need to make sure that we've got zoning policies in place, and we have zoning in place, enough land to accommodate all of these types of housing. So that's gonna be really challenging, and we're using consultants to help show how these numbers are gonna bear out. Now, where we start with all of this to figure out how we're gonna accommodate the future, we look at what do we have? So we're starting with our land capacity analysis, and that's gonna tell us how much land is either developed, undeveloped, or underdeveloped in the city. So parcel-by-parcel study of every piece of land in the city, and look at the zoning on it and say, under its current zoning, if it's undeveloped and you've got one acre and it's in the R2 zone, you can get, you're allowed six units in the R2? Four units in the R2, six units in the R2A. And, oh, I guess I actually have that here. In the R2A, six units per gross acre. So we apply these density standards to all of the parcel-by-parcel and determine, you know, if there's, only half of that parcel is developable, because there's already a house on it, and you can, you know, and make some assumptions about how, how much of that land can be developed. We'll then know how many new units under our current zoning we can accommodate over the next twenty years, or just how many can be accommodated. And then we'll, once we know how many we can accommodate under our current scenario, the way the zoning is, then we can start making policy decisions about, okay, do we need to expand our urban growth area? Do we need to change then our density standards to allow more density? Do we need to create new zones that have higher density? And then we also have to do this with our employment projections too, to make sure that we've got enough land to accommodate the type of jobs that we anticipate to, to need to accommodate over the next twenty years. So it's a little bit complicated, but I think the Planning Commission's up to the task. That's what I was just saying, or do we do a mix of all of those things? Can't really have a discussion about zoning without a zoning map, so here you go. You can see on the west end of the town is R2, that's the yellow, that's largely developed. There's not a whole lot of infill area remaining in that area. The orange is the R2A, is it? So the, there is a fair amount of potential for infill development in the R2A. The, I guess it's kind of, can't tell what color that is, salmon color is our R1 zone, so that's only two units per acre. So while there is a fair amount of land out there because of the zoning density at, you know, a fairly low two units per acre, then, you know, that doesn't, that's not gonna, where we're gonna see a lot of density potential. The teal color here is our R3, and that is a higher, higher zoning density, what did I say, R3 is, it's not based on units per acre, but it allows a single-family on forty-five hundred square foot lots, duplexes on seventy-five hundred square lots, square foot lots, and then you can do up to four units if you have an additional twenty-five hundred square feet per unit. The R3A, you can see there, is similarly based on lot size, but it's not mapped. So if you go back to our zoning map, there is no R3A here. Our Housing Action Plan recommends that we map an R3A, so that might be something that we do. The Planning Commission level is recommend areas that could be changed to R3A. Planning Commission could recommend that we create a new zone too. All doors are open. There's, nothing is off the table at this time. And then Old Town is, I think everybody is aware of where Old Town here is, it's cream color, and Old Town allows for nine units per acre currently. And what does that leave us for commercial-wise is the R4, or for residential-wise, I apologize, R4 is just off of, on either side of Commercial Ave, so you've got some, cursor disappeared, you've got some here, and you have some here, small strip. And that's our higher density. You can see in the R4, there is no actual limit on number of units per acre. However, you're gonna be limited by height limitations, frontage limitations, parking requirements, lot coverage requirements, setback requirements. So, you know, all of that really comes into play. And we'll be examining, like, the true impacts of all of these limitations on how, how that affects the develop, developability, if that's a word, of any specific lot. So what's next? We've, we've been given a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar grant for our overall comprehensive plan update, and we've executed a contract with Makers to update much of the comprehensive plan. plan. We're also in line and waiting for a, an additional five hundred thousand dollar climate grant to, to develop our climate, climate and resiliency element. And a lot of that's going to go towards technical studies, and a lot of that also is going to go towards public outreach. We've, because that's such a hot topic, we wanted to make sure that we have a lot of public engagement on the climate part. We'll also have a lot of public engagement on the rest of the comp plan because it's all tied together. So we'll be having meetings on the land use element and the, and the climate element stuff. They'll all be at the CIME meeting, so that all the people will be there for the same thing. So we're hoping to get engagement on all aspects through this process. And how are we going to, how are we going to engage with the public? Well, we're working on a public participation plan, and Makers, our consultant is putting that together for us, and we hope to have that in the next couple of weeks. And our goal is to bring that to the Planning Commission on March twenty-seventh, but don't hold us to that because we still haven't seen the first draft of it. But the sooner we get it out there, the sooner we can start this process because that is really step one to our 2025 comprehensive plan update process is engaging the public and making sure that we have a plan to make sure that the, the community has the opportunity to participate in this. For the past many, many months, we've been telling you that this 2025 comprehensive plan update is due in June of 2025, and we put together a tentative time schedule with Makers, and that has been out in the public when we, when we had the contract with Makers for public review at City Council. A lot of these things we need to have done basically by the end of 2024, so we can get it to the county for them to review because ultimately, the county is the one that makes the decision on an urban growth area boundary. Because it's not our boundary, it's the county's boundary. It's property in their, in their jurisdiction. So we have to work with the county on that, and so we need to have any, any urban growth area boundary changes to the county, we're hoping at the end of the year. However, for your information, a House Bill 2296 has passed both the House and the Senate and is being delivered to the governor's desk today, hopefully for his signature. And what that bill does, it extends the timeline for our 2025 comprehensive plan update to the end of 2025, so December thirty-first, 2025, which gives us six additional months, which is pretty incredible. We've been really pressing to get this done by, get, get the, the land use and urban growth area stuff done by the end of the year. Quite frankly, it would have been a miracle for us to have done it. So this extra six months gives us more time to get it to the, get that part of it done, and it allows for more public engagement just because it's a longer timeframe now. So we're pretty excited about that, and we're really hoping that Governor signs it. We don't see any reason why he wouldn't. That is the end of my presentation. I kept you here very late, sorry.
Thank you so much, and I personally really appreciate the greater detail of information. So commissioners, are there questions for Mr. Coleman? Mr. Mills?
Let me also repeat, thanks. The process overview and starting to see some of the raw data is really helpful in terms of trying to think through what we're about to embark on. It seems like that the driver of everything else is the population forecast, the employment forecast, and the housing unit forecast. And I understand that that came from the state level, allocated to the counties through a process, and then as you went through the process of how we allocated that or assigned that city by city within the county. And I assume that econometric and mathematical models were used by the consultants and/or staff as part of that process. How did those models take into, we're kind of, well, every city in the county is going to say they're unique, but our unique nature is we're an island.
We're what?
We're an island. Burlington isn't an island, Mount Vernon is not an island. So we have boundaries there in terms of how far this urban growth area can go. Also, we probably have, and I don't have data in front of me, but our percentage of public land is, I'm going to say is probably much greater than any of the other significant cities in the county.
Yeah, we have three thousand acres of forest land, and including Washington Park.
So in the, in the modeling and the discussions of how to allocate those populations, to what extent, or how was that taken into account, that we have some geographic boundaries that the other cities don't have, and we have undevelopable, hopefully undevelopable public spaces?
Well, as, as I explained, I think I mentioned at the council, I've been saying this a lot. So we do this to plan, to make sure that we accommodate growth, not because we're being told that you're going to grow by this much. This is our best guess of, you know, our historic growth pattern, and so we need to anticipate it. We can't say, we, we can't put our head in the sand and say, well, we don't want to grow, so we're not going to plan for growth. If we don't plan for growth, then we will have traffic problems, then our housing affordability problems get worse, then our, our sewer system can't handle the, the new people that are coming because the, the, the right-to-travel clause of the Constitution, the US Constitution, does not allow us to stop growth in our communities. So we need to just, with clear eyes, look at what we reasonably expect our growth to be and be prepared for it. And that way, you know, we maintain the quality of life that is good for the citizens and for what we expect. Our growth, you're right, because of our, because of our map, you can see there's forest lands and steep slopes and other impediments to growth. So our anticipated growth is largely out in the Sharps Corner area. And we have willing property owners in that area that have already requested for their land to be included in the urban growth area. So before we go ahead and say, yeah, come on into our urban growth area, we're going to go through this process to study, do we need to expand our urban growth area?
I wasn't, I realized that the urban growth area, I did catch that in your, in your comments earlier, urban growth area can be adjusted, and traditionally, sounds like it has been adjusted. But at some point, and I'm, nor was I suggesting that we should pull up the moat drawbridges and, or the twin bridges for that matter. So yes, growth, but the county had a fixed number that they had to allocate. What I was hoping to hear was that the geographical constraints that vary from city to city were considered in that allocation process because at some point, Fidelgo Island population growth will become asymptotic. You can't keep going at twenty-seven percent every decade, or you're going to have to change your zoning to have skyscrapers. So that, I just was hoping that somehow that was, those geographical aspects were considered.
You know, to be honest with you, Burlington is the most constrained. They are constrained by floodland and, and natural resource land, so they actually can't expand their urban growth area very much either because there, there are natural constraints. So everybody has constraints. Seadrill Lake can only grow to the north because of ag on either side and the river to the south. Mount Vernon has flood plains, they have problems serving once you get over the crust and starting heading west, I'm sorry, east of the, the big rock. Now you got to pump your sewer back over the top of a hill to, to get back to town. And, you know, steep slopes limit their ability to provide roads, safe roads. And so like, everybody does have geographic constraints, and it's something that we need to address. Now, we're a little, I'm a little biased here, so which city in Anacortes is, would this body say is the most desirable for people to want to move to? Anacortes, right? So we have things here that people want, and that's why we see our growth as it is. We're a very desirable place because of our open space and our natural beauty and our strong maritime heritage.
And our shorelines.
Shorelines. And, yeah, all of the things that are constraints are what draw people here. So because we can't put up the drawbridge, we just need to accommodate the growth.
Yeah, and I acknowledged early on that the other cities all had arguments why they were unique too, and you spelled that out. Thank you.
Mr. Coleman, I, I don't question, I do appreciate the work that's gone in. What I do question are the housing allocations by AMI. I'm not sure how the model would come up with more than fifty percent of the growth at fifty percent or less AMI. That's, that seems like, how did that happen?
And, you know, I, I've been having, I've been trying to explain, I was asked that question, and I've been having a hard time explaining it, so I'm not going to fumble through it. And I'm going to look for a, that's a, that's a good question because, yeah, you see, like, if we have two thousand nine hundred and forty-two units that we need to provide, and only, let's see, seven hundred and seventy-six of them, or seven hundred and seventy-eight of them are above the, above AMI. So isn't the AMI supposed to be the median, it's the median, right? So I can't explain that well right now, but as we get into this, that's something that I'll need to address.
Yeah, by, by my figures, fifty-one point five percent of that twenty-nine forty-two figure are units that are zero to fifty percent AMI. I'm not sure if anybody has looked at our population, but how are they figuring that that many supported housing units are going to be needed?
Sorry, I don't have a good answer.
Got it.
But it, it's a question that's come up before, so I'll be sure to get you a good answer.
I would offer, those are probably the easiest, easiest in some ways to accommodate, right? Because they're the smallest and least expensive, you would think.
I don't think so.
Maybe.
Most expensive, they're supported by us, by we, the taxpayer.
Oh, yeah, I would think least expensive to produce, right?
I don't know.
Typically, well, yeah, absolutely, because those are going to be, you know, multifamily type units which, and with, you know, more basic finishes that, so, you know, you're, you're not having expensive finishes that are going to bring up the cost of the unit. So each unit is going to be much less to produce, first of all, in a multifamily situation, it's assumed that these are going to be multifamily type units. And in any, any multifamily type development, it's less, less dollars per unit to build than, say, a single family.
The other question that goes through my mind as an old educator is, has there been any conversation with the school districts about their projections for growth as well? Because it would seem like it would be wise to be talking with each other.
Absolutely. Their projections, their, their projections are largely based on our projections. They have different sources also that they use when they do their modeling to determine if, for future capital facility development. And capital, school capital facilities is addressed in our capital facilities element. Now granted, we just kind of take their information and put it in, but we need to, we definitely, they're a local stakeholder, and we need to involve them in the conversation. Same with the hospitals, same with the large businesses.
Any other comments from the commissioners? Whoa, no? Okay. Thank you so much, we appreciate that, Mr. Coleman.
More to come. Thank you.
And with that, let me see. I see nothing else on the agenda, so with that, we are adjourned.